Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education pursuant to New Jersey statutes and the rules adopted by the Board of Education. Notice of this meeting was sent to oral community newspapers, The Star-Ledger and Cable Vision of Elizabeth on Friday, October 12th, 2012. In addition, this notice is posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of 500 North Broad Street, and pursuant to this act, a copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers to this October 18th, 2012 meeting of the Elizabeth Board of Education. We are here to govern, provide management oversight, and make policy for the district. The superintendent manages the district. This is a meeting of the Board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of the Elizabeth Board of Education permanent record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask you that you silence the sound on your electronic devices, since it is legally mandated that these proceedings be accurately recorded. I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken this time, time this evening, to join us. Thank you for your interest in the Elizabeth Public Schools. There will be a public portion for citizens to address the Board. Participants for the public portion must sign in one hour prior to the advertised start of the meeting, so they may have the opportunity to speak. The sign-in sheets state the name, address, and telephone number, reason that the person wants to comment, whether it is an agenda item or general education comment. Roll call, Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Here.
DeNoso.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Montero.
Here.
Munn.
Here.
Padlo.
Here.
Carrera.
Here.
Trujillo.
Naska.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez, would you please lead us in the invocation?
Where everybody stand up, please. Bow your heads. Dear God, we give you a thanks in this month of Thanksgiving. We give you a thanks for everything that you provide, for the great school system that we have, for the children that are here, for bringing us safe through the storm that we had in the past couple of weeks. We thank you for everything you provide, for every person in the district, every employee, every teacher, every custodian, every services worker that allows our children to be children while they're in school. We thank you for all these blessings, we thank you for our families, for this Board, and we ask you to bless us in the name of your San Jesus. Amen.
Please remain standing for the presentation of colors by the Admiral William F. Halsey, Jr., Leadership, Jr., ROTC.
Colorado, march and clap. Hold on, hop. Three, say, oh.
Now, we'd like to invite Laura Ruiz, 11th grade student at Thomas A. Edison Career and Technical Academy, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Star Spangled Banner by Francis Scott Key will be performed by the Elizabeth Public School staff members.
Colorado, hop.
Now, I ask Jadir Hines, 12th grade student at Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy, to lead us in the pledge of ethics.
As a member of the Elizabeth Public Schools professional learning community, I will treat people as I wish to be treated. To do that, I pledge to understand that the school community is a special place, listen respectfully when someone else is speaking by paying close attention and not interrupting, speak in a calm voice and use proper language, dress appropriately for teaching and learning, inspire the best in myself and others by celebrating successes and learning from mistakes, care about others by demonstrating acts of kindness, be a lifelong learner by taking every opportunity to learn from others.
Thank you, Jadir. Please be seated as we review our core beliefs video.
We believe all students can learn and achieve at high levels.
In Elizabeth Public Schools, rigor means actively creating and implementing challenging standards that define the level of cognitive complexity of expected learning. Such standards are applied at all levels in the district, including classroom activities, instructional plans, course content, student work, assessments, both summative and formative. We will ensure that all students graduate prepared to pursue a post-secondary education. It is through such an education that the achievement gap is eliminated. Elizabeth Public Schools students will strengthen the nation's economic, intellectual, and social impact on the world. In order to do this, we will ensure that every student, regardless of their socioeconomic background, is inspired to participate fully in their educational experience and cultivate a true passion for learning. We believe that teachers make a positive difference in student achievement. Elizabeth Public Schools teachers make a positive difference visible not only through higher test scores, graduation rates, and attendance, but by championing the love of learning at every opportunity.
We will recruit, develop, retain, and celebrate world-class teachers.
A world-class educator has high expectations of themselves and their students, is willing to challenge and be challenged, and pursues learning opportunities for continuous growth. Such an educator sees the potential in every child with no exception. They teach with passion and make an effort to ensure that every student reaches their full potential.
We believe that effective leaders produce excellent results.
Effective leaders are conduits for student success, inspiring Elizabeth students to think, to learn, to achieve, and to care. Effective leaders impassion others, earning the trust and loyalty of those around them. It is their incredible passion and energy that engage, inspire, and motivate others to achieve excellence.
We will recruit, develop, retain, and reward result-driven leaders.
The goal is only excellent results, and effective leaders do not tolerate anything less than excellence. Our leaders will demonstrate an honoring will to contribute to and enable those around them to increase student achievement.
We believe that a high performing team produces a legacy of enduring greatness.
Elizabeth Public Schools is dependent on its internal and external networks working in collaboration to ensure high student achievement. The internal team members include the teachers, staff, and community members that directly affect student achievement. The external team includes the community at large, partnerships with nonprofit organizations and universities, faith-based communities, and state and national education agencies.
We will build a high-performing team that achieves excellence.
The end result is a sustainable system that supports networks of people committed to excellence through education. Our students will leave Elizabeth Public Schools with a passion for learning that will lead them through a lifetime of fulfilled dreams.
Tonight, we're going to have a couple of performances by our Elizabeth Public School staff members. Let's welcome them as they perform the first piece, "Tenor Madness" by Sonny Rollins. Second will be a piece called "Song For My Father" by Horace Silver. The Elizabeth Public School staff members, ladies and gentlemen.
Thanks very much. Just to take a moment, we're going to flip the order, switch things up. First tune is by Horace Silver. We had occasion a couple of weeks ago to have a visit to the audition by the progress group, it's Kate Barry, and during that conversation, the topic came up, a pretty prominent jazz competition, a composer in piano, who was a pillar by Horace Silver, who was from Kate Barry, so he contributed to that visit and that opportunity by playing "Song For My Father." The second tune is "Move" by Sonny Rollins from Tenor Madness. And the top tenor winner is, like, a pretty standard tune. Just before we play the last section, I'd like to introduce the members of the band. Pano from Albinist Academy, my name is Stanley Schwartz. Mark Trumbes from Upper Logan Academy, Mr. Plejman Schwartz. On the bass, from the Tarrasian School of Seven, Brendan Lowe. Far left trumpet player, your right, Upper Academy, Grand Redder, I'm Mr. Wayne Dillon. Much to him, from the La Brea Leno, Elena Academy, School of Twenty-Six, Dr. Thomas Seaman. The pleasure of standing next to me, Albinist Academy, Meredith Corney. My name is Dennis Arable, and I have the pleasure of going to be the supervisor of music for this district. The offstage review, Tenor Madness.
That was fantastic. The Elizabeth Public School staff members, another round of applause, everybody. Great job. You know, guys, with a little bit more practice, you'll sound as good as some of the student bands that come up here and perform before us. So keep up the good work. And just so that everyone knows, this past week, the marching band competed down in Maryland, and they repeated as state and national champions. So let's give it up for the Elizabeth High School marching band. The efforts and the hard work of the teachers and the performers that you see here is what helped us repeat as national champions. So let's give them another round of applause for preparing our children and teaching them to be great musicians. So thank you, guys, for all your work, thank you for your efforts, and congratulations. I'm going to ask my colleagues to join me in front of the dais. We have a few presentations. Elizabeth Public Schools proud by scoring in the top 3% of more than 160 Black Americans who took the 2011 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. He was recognized by the National Achievement Scholarship Program. That student is Jadir Hines from Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy. And I was just, I might have mentioned 160, no, the number is 160,000. So top 3% of more than 160,000 Black Americans who took these exams. Next, we'd like to honor 22 of our high school students who volunteered their time at Trinitas Regional Medical Center to assist when many staff members were unable to make it to work due to the gas shortage or other problems caused by Hurricane Sandy. These students, many of them currently in our nursing program, assisted with patient care, feedings, transporting, discharging patients, and performing errands and requests of medical center staff in the days following the storm. Some of these students also assisted in the emergency room and in the intensive care. The CEO of Trinitas Regional Medical Center, Gary Haran, commended these students for their proficient assistance to patients and staff and for volunteering their time. We would also like to recognize two of our dedicated nursing program teachers who helped to organize and oversee these students, as well as volunteer their own time at Trinitas after the storm. As I call your name, please come up to receive a certificate recognizing your volunteer contributions in the wake of the hurricane. Teachers from Thomas Edison Career and Technical Academy, Patricia Haydo and Eileen Mulroy. From Elizabeth High School, Montaja Chavri, Ina Martinez, Emily Rosado. From Thomas Edison Career and Technical Academy, Michelle Arias, Joshua Bravo, Emily Dominguez, Jennifer Fajardo, De'ling Gerardo, Geraldine Gonzalez, Jesús Lazo, Adalinares, Danae Llorente, Sofia Mendoza, Melissa Mosquito, Eileen Perez, Natalie Reyes, Laura Ruiz, Leila Zulwana, Catherine Cifuentes, Jessica Torres, Michelle Yuchin, and Florencia Ullom. Jessica Torres, Michelle Yuchin, and Florencia Ullom. Congratulations, once again. Throughout New Jersey, people have dealt with severe hardships as a result of Hurricane Sandy. Here in Elizabeth, the storm brought significant damage. Many residents lost power, and some lost even more. As members of the community, the Elizabeth Public Schools felt the responsibility to contribute in any manner possible to assist residents with receiving basic needs. However, any effort to help our greater community would have to happen while addressing the needs of the schools, including assessing damages and fully restoring power to schools and offices. Tonight, I am proud to recognize the tremendous efforts to the Elizabeth Public Schools Division of Food and Nutrition Services, Division of Plant and Property and Equipment, and the Department of Security, the Division of Technology and Information Systems in restoring our school community while aiding the residents of Elizabeth in the recovery effort. Following the conclusion of the storm, team members came to our school to get them up and running. In addition, for several days, team members contributed at the Dwyer Eye Leap Center, where residents were invited to eat warm food, recharge cell phones and other technology devices, and file for disaster assistance through FEMA. Please join me in recognizing the directors and coordinators of these teams for their leadership and dedicated service to both Elizabeth Public Schools and the Elizabeth community. As I call your name, please come up to receive a certificate recognizing your contributions. Luis Coto. Ismael Estrada. Alberto Marsao. Jamie Levin. And Isolina Oyola. Mr. Coto, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I'm really honored for the recognition of the board, for my division, for the big efforts in these difficult times during the storm. But I have to say that the merit really goes to my team, the maintenance group led by Miguel Jimenez, who's here in the audience, that carpenters, plumbers, electricians that were running around the buildings before the storm to protect it and after the storm to take care of repairs, make sure the buildings are in full service, protecting the equipment. Because all the staff that spent hours taking turns to in dark and cold buildings when they were without power to be able to protect them and so they will not be damaged for the children when they come back. And our warehouse that was very efficient in discarding all the food and replacing it with fresh food so the children could be fed the next day. So I, the merit, and the heroes, the real heroes are them. So thank you, and thank you, board.
Once again. Okay, we can be seated. Mr. Kennedy, will you please lead us through the agenda?
Thank you. Approve the minutes of the meetings of October 18th and 23rd.
Approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Ms. Castillo. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
Denoso.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Munn.
Abstain.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Acceptance of the Secretary and Treasurer's Report for the month of September?
Move the report?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Pereira, second by Mr. Padlo. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
Denoso.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Tab 2A Personnel Report?
Move the report?
The report? Second.
Moved by Mrs. Munn, second by Mr. Padlo. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
Denoso.
Abstain.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Abstain.
Trujillo.
Abstain.
Nazca.
Yes.
2B Personnel Report?
Move the report?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Munn, second by Ms. Castillo. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
Denoso.
Abstain.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Munn.
Abstain.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes, with abstention on page 13.
Trujillo.
Abstain.
Nazca.
Yes.
Tab number three Tuition Report?
Move the report?
Second.
Moved by, moved, motion made by Mrs. Munn, second by Ms. Castillo. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
Denoso.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Tab 4A Considerations?
Move the report?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Ms. Munn. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
Denoso.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Munn. Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
I need to go back to tab 3A Supplemental Tuition Report?
Move the report?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Pereira, second by Mr. Padlo. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
Denoso.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Okay, tab 4B Use of Facilities?
Mr. Kennedy, I'd like to recommend with waiver of all fees.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Denoso, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
Denoso.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
4BB Use of Facility With Fees?
Move the report?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Pereira, second by Mr. Denoso. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
Denoso.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
4C Field Trips?
Approve the trips?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. Pereira. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
Denoso.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
4CC Supplemental Field Trips?
Move the report?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Pereira, second by Ms. Castillo. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
Denoso.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Superintendent's Report? Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. President of Board, members of the board, public, viewers at home. This is the excellence news since our last board meeting. Nearly 2,000 students, team members, and parents gathered on Tuesday, October 23rd, for the celebration of yet another Elizabeth Public Schools' great academic achievement. The Perfect Scores Award Ceremony held at the Dunn Sports Center honors students who earned a perfect score on the New Jersey Assessment of Skills and Knowledge, NJAS, and their subject area teachers, who are instrumental in helping these students achieve academic excellence. The Elizabeth High School marching band brilliantly capped off another undefeated season by winning the US Band's Group 5A National Championship, as well as the US Band's Group 5A State Championship for the second year in a row. Representatives from Verizon Corporation conducted the HISPANIC, Hispanic Inspiring Students' Performance and Achievement Seminar at Benjamin Franklin School Number 13. HISPANIC's educational initiative consists of a role model program focused on middle school students and their commitment to high achievement. HISPANIC mentors from Verizon shared with students their stories of leadership and success. In addition, they donated Verizon backpacks filled with school supplies. Trois Sols de la Tour, Marquise de Lafayette School Number 6, held its first Avid Night of the school year on Wednesday, October 10th. Seventh and eighth grade Avid parents were treated to an overview of their Avid elective class. They were escorted to the library, where students set up stations to showcase some of the Avid strategies they are learning and practicing in class. Highlights of the night included tutorials, learning logs, Cornell note-taking, and organizational binders. On October 4th, Christopher Columbus School 15 welcomed Kathleen Rogers from the Union County Office of Health Management. Ms. Rogers visited the first, second, and third grade students and provided a classroom demonstration on proper hand-washing techniques to prevent the spread of germs and promote healthy living. Sixth and seventh grade students at John Marshall School 20 showed their support during Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Mr. Henkel assigned the project where students researched a famous person who survived breast cancer, telling his or her story. As part of the Juan Pablo Duarte Jose Juli and Marti School 28 proactive approach to preventing bullying, District Social Worker Sam Bernstein provided students with, in grades K to 8, with a bullying prevention workshop. Teachers from Juan Pablo Duarte Jose Juli and Marti School 28 recently participated in a professional development day to increase their knowledge in science instruction as part of the Merck Institute for Science Education. On October 18th, Joseph Battin School Number 4 held a cancer awareness forum. On October 16th, as part of Anti-Violence Awareness Week, District Social Worker Sam Bernstein conducted a bully awareness presentation to students at Christopher Columbus School Number 15. Prevention Links brought the Keys to Intervisions Program to Ronald Reagan Academy School Number 30. The program is a 15-session educational curriculum that addresses various challenges faced by adolescents. Lessons consist of emotional control, personal accountability, school performance, and special attention to the principles of change. Charles J. Hudson School Number 25, Class K-13, had Think Pink Day on Friday, October 26th. All students were asked to wear something pink in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. On October 16th, more than 400 students from Victor Mavlak School Number 21 and William F. Howler in School Number 22 voted in a mock presidential election. In the month of October, Victor Mavlak School Number 21 and William F. Howler in School Number 22 celebrated fire prevention. It provides a good opportunity to teach students about fire safety. Terrance C. Riley School Number 7, eighth grade students focused on the skill of listening to enhance their understanding of the play, The Miracle Worker. Before reading the play, students considered the role that our five senses play in constructing meaning in the world. Using iPads, students listened to a dramatic reading of the play as they read along with the text, focusing on how the sense of hearing helped to recreate emotions and drama that would be present in a performance. Principal Linda Sinashen, Vice Principal John Melody, and Science Co. Tracy Espirito were interviewed by The New York Times in October about Dr. Albert Einstein Academy School 29's recent acquisition of the Magic Planet Globe. The Elizabeth Board of Education provided School 29 with the Magic Planet Globe to promote the use of innovative technology to inspire students to learn science, technology, engineering, and mathematic concepts. The Magic Planet Globe is a 16-inch portable education unit created by global imagination. Digital Globe is equipped with simulations and short films that easily support topics including science and social studies. The faculty at Dr. Albert Einstein Academy use the Magic Planet Globe to enrich student learning experiences by providing a unique perspective on various educational topics. Some of the many topics included with the Magic Planet Globe are the theory of continental drift, plate tectonics, volcanic activity, global effects of earthquakes and tsunamis, climate change, weather system plants, and the history of political boundaries. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Kennedy, would you lead us through the rest of the agenda?
Tab 5 Authorization Report?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Pereira, second by Ms. Castillo. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trujillo.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone an item on page 6, the donations of $900 from Elizabeth Chapter Unico, if that could be postponed until after private, so that I can inquire further about that donation.
Second. Roll call, Ms. Kennedy, is as amended?
Castillo.
Yes, as amended.
Denoso.
Yes, as amended.
Gonzalez.
Yes, as amended.
Montero.
Yes, as amended.
Munn.
Yes, as amended.
Padlo.
Yes, as amended.
Pereira.
Ferrer. Trujillo.
Yes, as amended.
Nazca.
Yes, as amended.
5A, supplemental authorization report.
Move the report.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Ms. Munn. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
5B, second supplemental authorization report.
Move the report.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Padlo, second by Ms. Castillo. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Tab number 6, authorization to pay vouchers.
Pay the vouchers.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Munn, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Abstain.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Abstain.
Nazca.
Yes.
6A, transfer of funds.
Transfer of funds.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Munn, second by Mr. De Nosa. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Abstain.
Nazca.
Yes.
7, award of contracts report.
Award of contracts.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Munn, second by Ms. Castillo. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Trujillo.
The first item on, uh, the first page, the contract with Union County Department of Corrections, um, to present a program entitled Anti-Bullying and Gang Prevention. Is it necessary to enter into a contract, and is this contract available for review? I, I know there's, I've participated in the past where they've, um, done this to the PTA and the PTO in schools, and I don't remember entering into any contract to do that. That was on, uh...
The con- if it's a, if it's a PTA or PTO co- um, sponsored event, those are separate organizations that don't require, um, a board contract, but with the board, um, authorizing participation in a school, there is actually a contract. So the difference is the organizations.
Okay, thank you, Mr.
Any further comments? Roll call, Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
7A, supplemental award of contracts.
Move the report.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Ferrer. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Abstain.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Abstain.
Nazca.
Yes.
7B, second supplemental award of contracts report.
Move the report.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Padlo, second by Ms. Munn. Questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Abstain.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Abstain.
Nazca.
Yes.
8, tab 8, miscellaneous communications. There are none. Tab 9, claims list.
Pay the claims.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Trujillo, second by Ms. Castillo. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Abstain.
Actually, I would like to change my vote to abstain. Abstain, please.
Nazca.
Yes, with an abstention of page 5.
We have a second reading of revised policy and bylaw, Policy 6172, Alternative Educational Programs, and Bylaw 9326 Minutes, and a resolution for adoption.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Ms. Castillo. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Abstain.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero. Oh, excuse me. Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
We have a Resolution 10A for the continuation of our comprehensive general liability and insurance package policy with the New Jersey School Boards Association Insurance Group.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Trujillo, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any questions or comments? Hearing unrolled, call Ms. Kennedy.
Castillo.
Yes.
De Nosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Montero. Munn.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
That concludes this portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, with the recent election now completed, I want to take the opportunity to make a few comments. Um, the moving of our school board election to November did result in a larger voter participation. As you were, as you will recall, our board supported, supported unanimously to move the election as soon as we were given the opportunity. Elections provide choices. I am, of course, pleased that my two colleagues, Elsie Castillo Ospina and Tony Montero, ran first and second. I share the view of the electorate that your continued service is beneficial to our educational community. To Ms. Baphylus, I compliment you on your victory. We all look forward to working with you for the betterment of our educational community. To our colleague Anthony Padlo, your appointment to the board allowed us to get to know you. We all appreciate your diligent service and your hard work, and I sincerely hope you will continue to stay active in the educational community of Elizabeth. At this time, the microphones are open for public comment to those who have signed in prior to this session. I shall call individuals to the microphone based on the order of the sign-in. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public comment shall be limited to 60 minutes. No individual is able to yield their name, yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. The following rules for public participation, participation apply. Time limits will be strictly enforced, no personal attacks on individuals, no vulgar or indecent language. A person may address the board no more than once during a single meeting. Speakers should refrain from naming individuals. Comments or questions posed during public participation will not be debated. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. I'd like to call Jose Rodriguez, 618 Jackson Avenue.
Good evening. I just wanted to say, uh, first off, congratulations to the Elizabeth Marching Band, uh, for their win, and I know also the, uh, Elizabeth Soccer Team plays tomorrow, I believe, against Westfield in the state, uh, championship, so, uh, good luck to them also. I know with the recent election, I just want to congratulate again Ms., uh, Ms. Castillo and Mr. Montero for their reelection, and also, uh, a friend of mine, Ms. Baphylus, um, for being elected, and just wishing everybody a happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you for your comments. Next, I'd like to call Maria Echeverria, 123 Westfield Avenue.
Hello? Can you hear me? Hello? Okay. I'm still gonna, um, hi, everybody.
Good evening, Maria.
Um, I just wanted to say, um, since the, cause I did get the thing on the, on the voice message about the lottery school. Is there any way that one of these lottery schools can ever be a school for autism? I'm still gonna ask that question. I'm always gonna ask that. It's a mommy thing. Um, let's see. Um, school number 12, my daughter's school, I mean, you, you guys did paint the outside of it, but inside of it, it really needs some air conditioning. Maybe we could get that in there before the summertime comes, cause at times they're checking the temperature in the classroom, and if it's too hot, they have to move the, the class to another room or into the hallway or whatever it is, and you know, at that time, you know, no one's really learning. You got a lot of hot kids with hot teachers and everybody's hot. So I don't know if they could do something about that instead of those hot fans that they do have, you know, so, but that was basically it. Okay, good night, and have a good holiday, everybody.
Thank you very much. Maria, I believe I owe you some information that you asked me the last time we spoke, so I'm working on that and I will get that to you.
Also, can we address the air conditioning now? Um, I, I'd like to respond to. That concern was mine also since my son attends school 12 and I, it became an issue. If you notice, they're piecemealing it because it's a capital improvement, and we're only allotted by the state since we're stewards of state money, $500,000 a year, so it'll get done, we're estimating probably through the next three to four years, but we are piecemealing, so on those very hot days, they have, uh, facilities now in the cafeteria to cool off if need be, and there's plenty of space. My concerns or your concerns?
Next, Maria Maderos, 324 Franklin Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wasn't supposed to be here today, cause today's my son's 29th birthday party and, but obviously I was threatened. I don't know who it was, but they said if I did show up here, that they was gonna put a sex tape about me on your videos. And I, I know it's not the board that's doing it, but I just want to let people know, I'm the kind of person that I'm not afraid to show up anywhere. So you could threaten what you want, but I think it's a disgrace how you want to attack me in that manner, because you know, that's, that's foul. I have children, I have grandchildren. So, you know, I'm here, so if anybody has this tape, I would like to see it myself, cause it's the first time, but that's to show I'm not a coward. I will come out up here and stand up for myself and anybody else that asks me to. But I think it's appalling how, if you have an issue with me, don't, don't make lies or, or try to frame me in any way of my character and as me as a parent, because I don't do that. I don't attack people's family, I don't attack children, but if this is the way that people think that they're gonna stop me from coming here, well, you know something, you have something else coming to you. Because I missed my son's birthday party, just to come here to show that I'm not afraid. But to make up lies about me saying of, of a sex tape and say that if I do show up, that they were gonna broadcast it from their home, so I'm just letting whoever's doing it while I'm here, I don't see nothing, so stop the lies. Because I'm not the one to be played with. I don't attack people's children, I don't expect anybody to, or me, deframing me as a parent. Because as long as I know, none of my parents and my kids have been stopped, they've never been in criminal, they have never landed up in jail, they're not welfare cases, nor anything. So don't try to frame me as a parent, as a concerned citizen, as a taxpayer, because I'm the last one to be afraid. I don't, I don't fear no one. I don't fear anything unless it's thunder. I'm afraid of that, but other than that, I'm not afraid. To make these lies up about sex tape, I would love to see it, because you know, me and my husband, we're waiting to see this, because you know, it's a...